All right, it's 6:33 PM and I'm calling the Select Board to order. I move to enter into executive session and re-enter open session after exiting executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 30, Section 21A, Paragraph 4, to discuss the deployment of or strategy regarding to security personnel or devices.
Second.
Any additional discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Selectman Moore.
Aye.
Selectman Alonso.
Aye.
Selectman Emke.
Aye.
Selectman Jeffries.
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, July 16th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Are there any public comments from the board?
Just a continued announcement. Last night was band concert number two of five. So, wow, feels so official. There are three more Mondays right in front of TC Passio, 7:00 PM. Last night's weather was great. The week before that was great, so hopefully we continue that. I feel like I should give my Lou Gehrig speech. Anyway, please come out. There is one more, there's three more concerts. It'll be the next three Mondays and there'll be, the fourth Monday is a rain date in case any of the other three get rained out. Thank you.
Are there any public comments from the public? Coming up?
Dave Platt, 411 Goodrich Street. I'll start with that hat first. I wanted to come, Heather, I wanted to say we're gonna miss ya. Thank you for all your time, your service and all that other stuff that you've done for this town. I'm hoping you're gonna enjoy the next phase, but you know, how much more fun can you have than working with us folks here in Lunenburg? The other side of this is I'm gonna approach you guys as part of the Green Committee, okay? If you guys, I've been here before in front of you, you guys are familiar with the Green Committee. We get you basically free money to help do upgrades, energy upgrades in this town. We unfortunately, you know, the most recent one was the streetlights. For those folks who have observed the new LED streetlights, that they're actually saving roughly, we're saving roughly $3,000 a month for the streetlights. So if, give you an example, as I think, what, last month's bill was $700? I don't even think it was that much. Okay, last month's bill, as opposed to $3,700. So 3,600, this ROI is gonna be less than two years to basically pay for everything we had to do. The next thing is we're looking for projects, okay? We missed the spring grant round because basically we didn't have enough projects to make it worth our while. We're allowed up to, to apply for up to $150,000 worth of free money from the state. They are looking for towns like Lunenburg to be able to do that, and we need you guys to push, to help us push, or I shouldn't say the word push, excuse me, encourage the boards and the departments in town to submit projects. So there's a timeline we have, and the timeline that we've outlined to them is that by next August, well, by August the 15th, we need to get an idea of what possible projects they're thinking of. You know, this is for a chance for us to review the projects, take a look to make sure they're feasible for green grant, and to make sure that they're things that they want to go ahead with. By September 15th, we'd like to be able to finalize those projects and start having the data to be able to be able to submit for the October, for the October submittal. This is a very competitive round, usually the spring round we were looking, excited because it's not as competitive, but the October round is very competitive. There is $150,000 up for grabs. One of, you know, there's several key projects we think would be extremely excited for the town, and one of them is the mini splits in the school. If we think about it, we can get you guys $150,000 towards those mini splits. All they need to do is ask the contractor to fill out the information for them. Every contractor who's state licensed, who's state authorized, has the ability to fill out that form and should fill out our form. We need your help in encouraging them to put this data together, to get it, get it for us. And any other departments that want things, we would love to be able to have 12 to 20 projects that we're going through and lining up for the next one, for the next one, for the next one. You know, we're allowed to do this once a year. It's, we don't know how, you know, we still have this round and another round of probably 150,000, since we're under a cap, we've done 600,000 already, over 600,000 already. So after that, we're gonna be bumped down lower, but we wanna try to get this town some money. Everybody talks about needing things and needing capital planning. We need your help to push, to encourage, to push the departments to be able to get things together for us. That was about it for tonight, guys.
Mr. Chair, I would say as our last capital planning committee meeting last Wednesday, we discussed this, and the whole, we're only four members right now, we have an opening for one, but everybody was unanimous in saying that every project that comes through us from every department, that would be DPW, the schools, any of the town projects, et cetera, police fire, anything that involves energy needs, like that's gonna be the first question we're gonna ask and all the department heads are gonna be required to answer that. If there is energy in there, it needs to have gone through the Green Energy Committee. So, and as a way of being proactive, I would say to the superintendent, to the facilities director of both the school and town, to DPW, all the department heads, I would send an email saying, hey, I hear that capital planning's gonna be coming, any projects you have for them that have energy component, please let us know.
Excellent, excellent. No projects too big, no projects too small. That's what we look at, we'll get everything. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Platt.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Ms. Menard?
Karen. Karen Menard, 672 Page Street. I'm actually here for Parks Commission. I figured I'd just do it now. Just wanted to give an update on the town beach, because there's been some chatter on our Facebook pages. So on July 8th, our water was tested. Those results came back on July 9th as very high for E. coli bacteria. The beach was immediately closed on the, on Tuesday afternoon of last week. It remains closed until now. The water's been tested, I think, three times since then, and we are seeing improvements in the water, but we have to get, our mean numbers have to be within range and we're just not quite there yet. Hoping possibly tomorrow, since they are getting better every time we test. They did do a water sample today, so those results will be in tomorrow afternoon. So we will be closed again tomorrow, but fingers crossed that we will be open maybe Friday. This is probably one of the longest beach closures we've had due to bacteria in my remembrance, my time there. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Is there anyone on Zoom? All right, announcements, both of mine have been made already. Communicate, are there any other announcements? All right, communications from other boards? I don't have any, do you? All right. All right, so moving into appointments. Up first, we have a joint interview, an appointment with Parks Commission to fill vacancy until next annual town election of Tim Lawless from 53 Whiting Street. So I will invite the commission and Tim as well. You guys can sit up at this table. It looks like those microphones are turned off, so you might have to turn them on. There should be a button on them, they might light up green. And then Anita, I'm gonna have to have you open up your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the support. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded, broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube. The agenda lists topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. So in attendance for the meeting, we have myself, Anita Shipers, we have Karen Menard, Colleen Shapiro, and we have with us tonight, Tim Lawless, who is the potential appointee for the Parks Commission.
All right, thank you. So it looks like your microphone's still off. Same with you two, so just wanna make sure that we can hear you.
Great.
So if you'd like, just introduce yourself and tell us why you wanna volunteer for the Parks Commission.
Sure. So hi, my name's Tim Lawless, 53 Whiting Street, Lunenburg. Born and raised in Shirley, Mass, and went to Lunenburg High School, class of five, I believe it was. It's been a while now. But I've always been interested in what the Parks Commission does. Very outdoorsy person, I love hiking, camping, anything water-related, and with two young kids, I know that what we offer in this town is kind of instrumental for that, especially in the summer program, but I'd like to see it all throughout the season. So if I can have a hand or say or provide guidance on anything related to that field, then I'm happy to do so. That's what kinda drew me in.
Cool. So I'll open up to questions or comments from the select board.
I don't have any questions, but just wanna thank you for volunteering, and I can tell you have a good level of enthusiasm, and it's nice to see.
Thank you.
I will ask the question we ask almost everybody that we appoint to an elected board for an interim position, which is, is it your intention that next election you would, barring any, obviously, emergency or any unforeseen thing, would you run for the full term or the remainder term?
For the remainder term for the time being, I believe, yes.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but you know, as a '06 graduate, I'm excited to see someone else, you know, joining and stepping up, and it's great.
Likewise, but not your face.
Thank you as well for volunteering. I think that, you know, over the last couple of years, the millennials have started to step up a bit more and get engaged in town government, so it's good to see that that continues with other boards.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any questions, so I'll hand it over to Anita if you guys wanna ask him questions or discuss.
Members of the board, any questions? No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does he have your recommendation?
We do. We recommend that we jointly appoint Tim Lawless to the open position of Parks Commission.
All right, great.
I would so move.
And I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? So, since we're all here, do we wanna do this together, or do we wanna do, okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes. Congratulations.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I don't want to, I don't wanna try to double dip, but I see on his application form that he had capital planning checked.
Oh yeah, I did notice that, too.
So, as I just noted that we have an opening, would you be willing, this is a town moderator appointment for the Chair. I don't know what your time commitment is, but it's an important position. If you are interested, this is a great opportunity to get a twofer.
Yeah, it's funny, it started with that and the Parks Commission came up, and I don't wanna prioritize these, but I don't know my level of commitment, once I get into this, I don't know what my level of commitment will be with two young kids and having to go into the city for work, but I'm sure that will be sussed out soon, so.
Do you mind if I send this, forward this to the town moderator at least, and he can talk to you?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm sure Anita will reach out, but one thing that you'll have to do pretty soon is go to the town clerk's office to get sworn in.
Okay.
But other than that, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Are we all done with us?
Yeah, you'll have to.
I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:20 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all, have a good night. All right, so we have five more minutes until our next appointment, so let's skip down to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. So up first is the resignation of the Waits and Measures Inspector, Stephen Cullenade.
This is just to notify the board that Stephen Cullenade has resigned. He is really retiring from the position. He's been in the position for, I believe, 11 years for the town, so we are looking for options right now, and Julie, the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, has reached out to the state as well to see if we can do our Waits and Measures through the state.
Any questions for the Town Manager?
Sometimes we have agreements with like Townsend or, you know, Lancaster, Fitchburg, Leominster. Are we able to lean on them at all for this?
We have reached out to an area community to see if their inspector would be interested in, that person is, but, so depending on, those are the options that we're looking at.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Heather.
Please thank him for his service to the town.
Yes. And to let the board know at this time, too, you mentioned thank you, I've asked the executive assistant to prepare a multitude of thank you letters for the board to sign, because we normally do that for departing board members or people who were reappointed or employees that have left.
Excellent.
Thank you. Ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of seasonal cemetery laborer, James Versoy.
James has eight years of experience cutting grass as a young entrepreneur. He enjoys landscaping, he pays attention to small details.
He pays attention to small details, is a hard worker, does not take risks, and is polite. And I'm asking the board to ratify him as a seasonal cemetery laborer to be effective today.
Any questions or is there a motion?
I would move that the board ratify the town manager's appointment of the seasonal cemetery laborer, James Versoy.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, so we still have about two minutes. Let's see.
Maybe under...
Oh, since it's not a public hearing, I can, oh, my apologies. All right. Moving on to our 7:25 PM appointment, toll booth fundraiser request for August 11th, 2024 by the Lunenburg Skate Park Project.
Oh, we have two of the young men back.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Aiden Moore, 59 Wildwood Road.
I'm Aiden Swift, 63 Oak Ave.
And then we're just here today to see if you have any questions about our fundraiser. This will be our fourth toll booth that we've done throughout the process of fundraising for the skate park. So if you guys have any questions about it, we're here to answer it.
Where are you at for your fundraising? You guys are pretty close, right, to your goal?
We, so I believe we're about, we're in the process of trying to complete the paperwork in the town to move forward into the clearing out all of the trees where we're trying to build. So we're kind of just in like a, in a phase where we're trying to, we're stepping away from fundraising and going more into the legal aspects of the project. So this will be one of our last fundraisers.
Okay. And it's for, what's the date? It's for, let me just find it.
August 11th.
August 11th, 10 AM to 1 PM. All right. Are there any other questions from the board?
No. The fourth year, I'm sure you know all the things you need to do.
Oh, yeah.
No questions.
Thank you.
I do. So first, good to see you guys again.
Good to see you, too.
It's been a couple of years now of this and I'll refrain from any comments today.
Oh, yeah.
So happy to give you a hard time. Good to see you guys, though, but I think first, how close, I think what Caesar Selectman Nuzola was getting at was how close to the goal fundraiser, how much more, how many more dollars do you need to raise to hit your goal?
I wouldn't say it's like a set amount. Like, it's not like we're trying to reach 400,000 exactly. Whereas trying to keep the, like, the word around, the hype up and...
Anthony Kyos, 1091 Massachusetts Avenue, $50,000.
Thank you. All right, so you guys are trying to raise 50 grand. My next, my next question is, you mentioned that you're going through the kind of legal process now of what can we do to be helpful? What are the hurdles you're hitting? What can we do, if anything, to be helpful? So you guys, I said, you guys are going through the legal process right now, Anthony, and what can, what can we do to be helpful to that process?
I wish you asked that, asked that 18 months ago. It's been a long slog. Honestly, it's been a long slog.
Hold on, 18 months?
Eighteen, nineteen months, yeah.
Okay, so please, if you don't mind, what's, what's the hurdle?
Regurgitate the past. We're at a good spot now.
Yeah, okay, good.
We've got the right of entry agreement, basically at the finish line.
Yep.
We've come to consensus on all the terms.
All right.
We're getting all the required Ts and Cs in place with all the subcontractors and getting everything lined up, so we can sign everything basically en masse.
Okay.
So we have that, the builder contract, the contracts with the subcontractors that are going to be donating their time, materials, and efforts, and that's all taking place over in the next six, eight weeks.
All right, so ROEAs, we call them ROEAs, but right of entry agreement.
Correct.
So you're working on that. Have you applied for any grants in this process? I know that the Parks has...
I've applied for a lot of grants.
Okay. How much have you received in grant funding so far?
I would say somewhere probably around 80 or 90,000 dollars.
That's good, okay.
About a third.
All right, okay. So 50 grand?
No, 80 to 90.
No, no, but 50 grand is what remains.
Yeah, well, I think we've raised about 3, 303.
Okay.
And we need to get about to 360-ish, but some of that's coming down, other parts are coming up. It's about 50K.
And where's your son at today?
Where's he, where's he? He moved into his new apartment this morning.
Oh, oh, wow.
Yeah, he's becoming an adult, so.
Doing the adulting thing.
And then we've got two others that are MIA today, so we'll pull the agents together for this. They'll all be there on August 11th, and they're obviously all old enough to be in the street.
Yep.
And they'll be the ones actually driving the entire effort this time.
Okay.
So we're just here sitting in the background for moral support and to answer questions that are a bit above their pay grade.
Well, Anthony, thank you for all your energy and Aiden and Aiden, thank you both as well.
I don't have any questions, so thank you. Is there a motion?
Yep. Go ahead.
I move to approve the toll booth fundraiser for August the 11th by the Lunenburg Skate Park Project.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Congratulations.
Good luck as always.
Thank you very much.
And I mean, when somebody drives by and slips that $50,000 bill right in there.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, so let's skip the town manager report for now and go down to current business. So first up, we have a discussion on Police Department Policies 4.13, Sex Offender Posting and Dissemination, and 4.14, Sex Offender Audits. So I'll invite the police chief up just to introduce this and I'll open it up for questions.
Sure. Good evening. Thank you for having me. We're introducing two new policies to add to our policy book, and the first one is Sex Offender Posting and Dissemination. This is just to make sure that we are on par with what the state law allows us and what we're disseminating and how we're disseminating it. And we want to make sure that any officer that receives information that we're guided in the right direction. As a part of that, we receive several calls on a regular basis about sex offender registry, about sex offenders in town, and we have to make sure that we're doing the proper thing also when we disseminate this information. Part of that is to make sure that people that receive this information understand the warnings that go with it also, that you can't use this information to harass people. That's 4.13. 4.14 is an audit. It is incumbent on a police department that we audit the information that we receive to assure that it is valid, and that's to keep the community safe.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you, can you explain what you, what the audit process is?
So what we would do is with the level of the offender, we would make sure that their residence is what they say it is or what they give to us at their registration. If they're employed in town, we would go check the employment, make sure that is exactly what they're telling us, that they haven't left town, or that we, you know, we receive information sometimes from another town that somebody may have moved in, that we need to verify that information. And a part of it is, is to make sure that we're doing the proper procedures also.
All right. And then for 4.13, just broadly, can you, can you, you know, I've also heard a couple of different questions, so can you clarify for us the rules around Level 3 sex offenders when it comes to access to libraries, when it comes to town meeting, which happens to be at the schools?
Sure. There is no rules preventing them from being there unless it's specifically specified in their registration or within a court order. So we can't prevent them from coming to open meetings. That's their right as a citizen to be there. Library's open to the public unless there is specific information on their sex offender registry, that's the only way we can prevent them from being there.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question on 4.14, and this is, I bring this up occasionally when this word comes up or the use of this word. So in the policy, it says that the department is going to conduct these audits biannually. I'm assuming biannually in your words means every two years.
Correct.
Not twice a year.
No, no, twice a year, within six months.
So, okay. So semi-annually?
Yes.
You may want to say twice a year. I always object to these words because it means two things.
Yep. I can change that to say twice a year.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Doesn't it say that no more than six months?
It says bi, I believe it is biannually, the way it says it.
Yeah.
And then it says within six months of the first registration.
Just to not confuse people, if he says twice a year and then it says no more than six months, that'd be great.
I think that.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else we want to address with it or are we willing to make a motion?
I move that we approve the policy, the Police Department Policies 4.13, Sex Offender Posting and Dissemination, and 4.14, Sex Offender Audits as presented by the chief, with the word change in biannual changing to twice a year.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. While you're here, though, can we...
You've got the policy machine working today, chief.
I do, I do. And I've got more. I'm staying right here.
Yeah. While you're here, so we'll jump down to discussion on Flat Hill Road petition. So we received a petition and I'll just go over a couple of things that they're asking for. For the speed limit to be reduced to 25 miles per hour with zero tolerance on Flat Hill Road, that the road be electronically monitored, and that the speed limit be enforced. And we also have a traffic study as well that maybe you can speak to.
Sure.
Or I could summarize it, too, but I'd just like to speak to it.
Basically, the traffic summary we did, study we did a couple of years ago, because I did receive complaints for that area, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we have all the information. The people that were making this petition were the same people that complained a couple of years ago. What we do is we put a traffic trailer out there. It has a data count. It can do speeds, it can do times. And generally, what we look for is what is the average speed? Is it safe for the area? Are we seeing any anomalies? Like, are we seeing 600 cars that are doing 50 miles an hour down there? We're looking for that type of information. The study that was done a couple of years ago, I believe the average speed was 26 or 27?
23.
23 miles an hour. What I'm seeing right now, we just, we're in the process of doing a study right now. It's not completed yet, but the data I have for five days, the average speed is 24 miles an hour going southbound. I, I do believe that our officers enforce traffic issues diligently. They're out there. My traffic officer was out there on Flat Hill Road recently when he was putting up the signs, ran radar. I don't know how many stops he made, but he's, he was out there. I don't, I don't like the term zero tolerance. I don't think that's acceptable. I believe that part of our job is to educate the public, and if it's zero tolerance that people that live in that neighborhood that are speeding also are going to get tickets, and I don't think that's fair. Part of our job is to educate people, give people an opportunity, you know, to make those corrections and not always just issue citations out. I think that's a bad practice, and I think it's a bad practice throughout town. We need to have discretion and we need to be able to issue warnings when we have to.
All right, thank you, chief. Are there any questions?
Are we discussing this in full right at this point or are you just?
Yes.
Okay. May I?
Sure.
So from my, from my prior experience as a, as a military police officer, and I didn't work roads too much and did other stuff, but I understand that even a trained police officer is awful at gauging speed by sight and that most, because it's all about frame of reference. It's all about, there's a lot of other things that make you think something's going faster than it really is, and oftentimes when you put up a traffic survey, you know, people, what they assume someone's going by their house at 40 miles an hour, that when you actually test it, it's often closer to 30 or lower. And in this case, what we found was that the average speed limit was 24 miles an hour, and there are a lot of people going well below it and a handful of people going above it. However, generally, I mean, I think that most, I do kind of lean in the direction that people should be able to kind of set the speed limit in their neighborhood because it does perpetuate safety. However, if you told me that Lancaster Avenue to be 25 miles an hour, I'd fight you every day because I need to get out of this town within a certain period of time and I need that road to move at 50. Neither here nor there. You know, I don't, I understand Flat Hill is not a pass, it is a pass through in some small way, but it's generally not, because if you're on 2A, it takes you longer to get to Route 2 than if you were to go another way to get there. So it's mostly residents or people visiting residents that travel on that road. Is, you know, something we've, that the police have done in other locations is you've put up advisory speed limits, in which the speed limit could be 40, but you put up an advisory sign that says, you know, densely populated area, 30 miles an hour. And most people follow the advisory speed limits.
Technically, we wouldn't be able to put up advisory speed limit signs that are below what the actual speed limit is. That would be a violation of law. We can't do that. We can put up advisory that it's thickly settled. We can put up advisories that pedestrian traffic, you know, located in that area. I, I think this needs a little more extensive study also before we say every neighborhood should be able to determine what their speed limits are going to be.
Well, that's not the rule. The rules are the select board deciding. That's my general...
Yeah, yeah, but I also think, I think we got to look at this with a grain of salt, too. And again, there's unintended consequences with this. I can probably almost guarantee you the number of volume of cars that we're seeing are residents in that area. It isn't a cut through. It really isn't. That's a really, we have a one-laden road right now because of bridge construction, a bridge being out, and that's going to be constructed, reconstructed soon. My thought process would be to hold off on doing anything or taking any action on this until that bridge is replaced. Then we can do a full study, see if, what the issues are down there, and we do patrol down there. I mean, obviously, I can't put somebody down there 24 hours a day, but, you know, we can make a point of being down there and see if we can do some selective enforcement in that.
Residents will be blowing you up and upset if you start ticking them.
Oh, yeah.
If you already know.
Oh, yeah.[1587.54]
Mr. Chair, I, I would say that I think that the request underlines, underscores a larger problem in the town, is that it's an old town that built on old cart paths, and the roads for today's vehicles are too narrow. And I think the town should start, you know, trying to project as we, as we need to do things for stormwater and et cetera, is looking at roads like that. Like parts of Lancaster Avenue, like West Street between, you know, Sunny Hill Road and, and Lemmonster Road. I mean, these are crazy, dangerous roads that have, you know, huge trees on either side and barely enough road if somebody's not parking in the street to get by. You know, it's, it's unfortunate that some roads in town are not walkable. I wish every road in town had a wide shoulder or a sidewalk. I won't even bike outside of my own house on Lancaster Avenue, because where I am at the top of the hill, going into town has that crazy blind curve, that if I'm at the correct side of the street, going with traffic, I'm absolutely invisible when somebody rounds that turn. I would love to ride my bike there, but there's no way I could safely do it. I think we should, need to address largely these, I mean, they mentioned Reservoir Road. Reservoir Road is like a French boulevard. You know? And here we have a road like Flat Hill that's really just way too narrow for today's society.
Yeah. I, I agree. I, I think it's a, it's a bigger picture, and it's, there is a, there is a broader examination of the roads that we have to look at. I will say this, that, yes, you're right. I, I mean, Reservoir Road got posted. I get it, but I, I still have to look at what I see as what the issues are. And, and again, the unintended consequences. There's some strong statements in there, like, you know, zero tolerance and, and stuff like that. I, I just don't buy into that. I, I think we need to have some, we need to temper that down a little bit and say, okay, we'll do the traffic enforcement, we'll do the studies. And I do agree that some of the roads in town really do need to be either widened or provide some type of pedestrian safety. And again, you're, I, you're spot on. It's an old town with old cart roads that we paved over, right? And there was no, back then, no foresight of, all right, is this town gonna grow, or are we staying a farming community? Agreed.
So, one of the points raised in the petition, point three, was about cars passing in a no-passing zone. That's not captured in a traffic study.
It is not.
Yeah. I mean, that, I've seen cases, I'm not on, on this road, but just in general, on 2A.
Yep.
It's, that is, to me, a zero tol, I mean, that is incred, it can be incredibly dangerous.
I, I agree. I, I don't disagree with that. I, I think that's exception to the rules, too. The study I just provided with the chair for the last week, we had somebody doing 62 down that road. One car, right? And that's an exception to what everything else is. So, I think we need to look at those as, as exceptions, and we need to address them accordingly. Nobody should be passing anybody on that road regardless.
I think that, that's part of the problem with, if we say zero tolerance, you know, for something like that, if an officer was in the area, of course, they're gonna, they're gonna pull someone over.
Yeah.
You know, I, I've been passed on my Mulpus. I live on Mulpus. That is a terrifying road to try to walk down or, or drive down.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, some of them, yep.
Um, but I don't think that zero, saying zero tolerance is, is, I agree, it's, it's not really appropriate, I, I don't think. And I also think that our police officers do a great job of enforcing traffic violations, but, you know, there are times where there's only two people on the road, and you can't be on every road at every moment. So, you know, when we get a call, there's complaints, the officers do a good job of monitoring and, and doing the best that they can.
Well, and if they see you on the road, they're gonna be better behaved, so.
When, when, when they see you. There's two things I think are true. First of all, I, I totally agree that officers should have discretion, that there are situations. And I think passing in a no-passing zone, generally, I don't think you're gonna get away with a warning for that. Number two is, all the regulations in the world don't stop people from being bad drivers and being irresponsible drivers. If that were the case, then we wouldn't have, we would have a third or a quarter of the amount of accidents that we have, so.
And, and honestly, if that were, same thing. We wouldn't be having discussion if people behaved like, you know, we're supposed to. And, you know, it's an unfortunate part of, part of the monitoring society, is everybody's in a hurry to get somewhere. You know, and we're trying to slow people down, try to make them realize that you'll get there, just get there safely, you know?
So, I mean, for the, for the, if I may, so for the residents, right, who are living on Flat Hill and in that general vicinity, who, you know, walk their dogs, and they, and, you know, they know that people are going by them at a rate of speed that feels unsafe, all right? Whatever the speed limit may be, it feels unsafe, that if they just stepped to the left, their dog would be dead, or they'd get hit. You know, do you think that speed bumps at certain locations, and I, I know that DPW's gonna have some concerns with speed bumps, especially in New England with snow, we know that Flat Hill has a water drainage issue, we know that that road cracks and breaks, but do you think that, I mean, speed bumps in the 40 mile an hour, 30 mile an hour zone usually are ineffective, but what are your, what are your thoughts on, on other mitigating things that can be done?
If, if we didn't live in New England and we didn't have the winter weather that we are accustomed to, I'd be all for it, but I, I don't think it's practical. Especially because now you're talking about if a plow can't clear that road because of that speed bump, or we start damaging DPW equipment because of that, I, I think that defeats the purpose also, because now we don't have a safe road in winter. I, I think enforcing and, and putting educational information out there, this is perfect, to be honest with you, that people hear what we're talking about. And the concerns that those residents have out there, it's, it's people are, that are watching at home, or people that are here to address these issues, at, at least they have an opportunity to hear what we're saying, right? That's a public service announcement right there. And I think that goes a long way. And I, I think that goes a long way when we start posting things in Facebook, or we start giving those warnings and saying, you know, please, slow down. I mean, this is, this is a residential area.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering, you know, when they put up the signs, even the temporary ones, flashing your speed, you know, and you get the smiley face or the, I see them in Bolton all the time.
I always respond to those. I slow down.
Do, do you think they work?
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
I, I, I think they're devices that actually calm people down, you know, like smiley face, angry face, whatever.
Yeah.
We set, the, the traffic officer can set the parameters to those two, to, whatever it may be, it could be a flashing blue light, it could be a smiley face, it could be an angry face, it could say, slow down.
Yeah.
So, there's, you know, there's different things. We do have one of those signs that we put up there now, we can move it all around town, that we post up there and we use it on a regular basis. And that's how we get a lot of this information, too.
All right. Any other questions for the chief right now? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. A quick shout-out to green communities, too, because I've benefited quite a bit with the cruisers, and I, I would have to say I'll be talking to them again about many splits and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know this isn't a public hearing, but I see a lot of people in the public who may have shown up for this, so if you guys would like to come up and, you know, say anything or potentially ask questions, okay.
She speaks on a little nerve sex, Chief, for saying for a moment. Hi, my name is Norma Wells. I live on 914 Flat Hill Road, as you would just assume. So, I'm right on the corner of where Spring Street is. And then, so, twice a day, I walk my dog out there, and I walk him from Spring Street up to Reservoir and back again. And I'm telling you, I can't tell you how many times I've been in the Poison Ivy, because I jump. I always watch what's coming, when they're coming and they're going 60 miles an hour. To me, I drive that road, too. I know what it feels like to do 30, and I know what it feels like to do 60, so it's just frightening. It really is. And I just wish there was something that we could do. And even, I know the bridge will be repaired in October, we hope, that if you would commit to doing another speed study, that would be so great for us. Okay? That's all I ask for, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna come up?
Just repeat that once you get to the microphone, please.
I'm Nathan Jones. I live at 878 Hill, Flat Hill Road. I put the petition together because I see we have a lot of toddlers and new kids in the neighborhood, okay? And I know what it's like to cross that road, because they own property on both sides of the road, and I cross the road 25 times a day. My wife is disabled, and she can't tell, her brain doesn't tell her feet what's going on. So, if she sees a car coming and she tries to get out of the way, down she goes. That's how it is. It's, it's, that's a disease that she's got. As far as the, um, the survey that was done, that was done with a big trailer, so people can see it from a mile away. And of course, you're gonna slow down when you see that, because you think there's a cop on the other side of it. Now, the day after, they sent somebody down there the other day, I was standing on the side of the road with my dog, on my left-hand side, in the side of the road. One foot was half in the road. There was a car coming from the bridgeway towards me, so he was on the other side, and then a car came around the corner, that blind corner, and he, they passed within a foot of me. Within a foot, going 30 miles an hour. They don't slow down. They don't care if there's kids in the road. I see people with their, and the people with, with their babies in strollers. They have to go in driveways when they see a cop coming, because they don't trust them, because they've been, people have come so close to them. And I don't want this to go on until after the bridge is fixed. I would like to get it settled before the bridge is fixed, so that people know that you can't be driving over 25 miles an hour on that road. We have eight blind corners and five blind hills. Reservoir Road is perfectly straight, perfectly flat, and it's 28 feet wide. It's twice as wide as Flat Hill Road. Where at some places, we're 15 and a half feet wide. What room is there for somebody to be four feet away from a vehi, a pedestrian if there's two cars going by? How much room is left? It's not possible not to break the law, because you're gonna head-on. And I've been head, almost head-on on two of those corners. And that was why I started this petition, because I was on my way to Target, and somebody came around that corner going about 40 miles an hour, and I had to go off the road. And that's when I drove up here and put in the complaint. I had called the police department 23 times in 11 months before this. This was six and seven years ago. With no response at all. Nothing. Nobody ever came down. And then I get, we patrol this road all the time, no one ever speeds on this road, no one ever goes over 30. This is what I'm told. If you wanna do a real survey, come sit on my porch. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak?
I'm Sue Ropiek. I live at 833. We just moved in a year ago, so I wasn't here when Nate had his petition, but I do agree that it's fast. And I just have a couple of comments about things that were said. First of all, if the average speed is 25, that means that a lot of people are going faster. So, really, the average isn't what's important. I think you need to keep track of how many people are going excessively. Second, for unintended consequences, if it's people in the neighborhood that are speeding, I think it's fine if they get tickets. I mean, I don't know why people would get a pass. The point is to be safe. We don't care who's the one who's speeding, right? You just wanna be safe. And if you do get a ticket, then you're not gonna do it again. And then the other thing is, the portion of the road that Nate's talking about, it really is a blind, a blind curve, and it's really narrow. And if somebody's going quickly down that road, and somebody like his wife or somebody else is in the road, you're not gonna see that person in time to stop safely, so. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is James Jordan. I live on the corner of Flat Hill and May Street, and I'm a disabled veteran. And I've been advised to walk every day, but you can't walk on that road, not safely. People drive crazy, and it's narrow, and there's a lot of blind driveways. People trying to pull out of their driveways. When I pull out onto the street, I don't see nothing coming, and soon as I get out on the street, I can look in my mirror, and somebody runs up on my rear end, that fast. People fly down that road. I see it every day. I don't know, understand why they can't lower it to 25 at least. That, uh, at least tells them it should be slower than, than Reservoir Road, which is a highway compared to Flat Hill Road. That's a pig trail. There's no sidewalks, you can't, you gotta step off in the woods if a car comes, you know? And, uh, I believe it should be at least that. They lowered the speed limit on Reservoir to 25 when they put the new houses in, and that's a straight shot. You can see all the way from one end of the hill, the stop sign. But they put 25 there, but they won't do it on Flat Hill Road? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for your service.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Ray Cotterson. I live on 5 Spring Street. I'd just like to concur what these folks have been saying. I don't usually say too much, but it really is dangerous. You know, I, I walk, I try to walk on the left side of the road the way it's supposed to and so forth, and there are spots that, you know, I have waved down cars myself, even one time, a police car. But anyway, but it really is, you know, it is something. Now, you mentioned something about a light, or blinking lights, or something like that, that they, I see those in the areas that, that give this, the speed, it should be, that you're doing at least, or something like that. Is that a possibility? Has that worked well with any of the spots that you've seen?
The system we have now is a rest of permanent time.
Chief, do you wanna just get into the microphone?
The signs we have now is the, the signs that we use to do studies in a slow neighborhood traffic down, put in different areas of town. That equipment is pretty pricey. You're looking anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 for that, to place that permanently up there.
How many thousand?
Six to 10.
Oh.
To price it permanently?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the equipment itself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty pricey. It's not cheap.
And the sign is not realistic, putting the 25 mile an hour sign on there?
That would be up to the board. I would have to petition the board. And that would be in conjunction with the DPW directive.
I have a question for the, how, how, when you start the traffic survey, how long, when, what date do you expect the survey to be complete by?
Um, we're, right now, we're gonna do seven days each direction, and then my anticipation is when that bridge is completed. And again, to be fair, I, I wanna make sure that we're doing the right things, too, not just because it's, it's, the road is one lane or whatever, let's take a look at it when we open that bridge and see what the traffic issues are there. And then we'll do it again, we'll do it for a seven-day period in each direction.
And that's, and that's after October?
Uh, once that bridge is completed, we'll put it right back up.
So, oh, I'm sorry. So, you're looking to do it now?
We are doing it now.
And then again, in October?
Yep, and I'll do it again when that bridge is completed.
Got it.
Chief, is there a way to, to set up the traffic survey a little more incognito mode, so they don't see the?
Um, yeah.
Like, drivers don't know it's hap, you know, to get true behavior, not like?
You can, but I think it defeats the purpose. I think the idea to put those signs up and with the speeds is to slow people down.
No, I don't, I don't think.
No, to get a true sense of behavior.
I think for the study, I think for the study, some people in the audience have stated that isn't what the purpose should be.
I.
Cause I'm, they'd be looking around the corner for that. I think there's an officer maybe sitting there with a radar gun.
You need line of sight for those, for that equipment also, because it's radar-based.
I guess the real question is, can you run it without the sign being lit?
I'd have to ask my traffic officer.
Okay. Well, that would be interesting.
Yeah. The, you know, I'm hearing, and a lot of it is just the design of the road, blind curves, hills, whatnot, and posting a speed limit of 15 miles an hour. I mean, you, people ignore those speed limit signs on every road, all over the place.
Agreed.
Um, and I'm just trying to think of other ways to get people to either pay attention, or maybe it's people who aren't even aware of the road, and they just are driving, like, oh, I didn't know that corner was gonna be so sharp, kind of thing, or, um, I don't know. I thought I had heard, is Flat Hill Road a scenic road designation?
I.
I don't know.
I feel like I heard that at some point.
I don't think so.
I think Lancaster Rav is.
What?
Does, does Flat Hill Road have a scenic road designation?
I don't think so.
Okay. I thought I had heard that at one point. Okay.
Could be wrong. I would, uh.
I don't know. I mean.
I don't think so.
Why would that matter? Just out of curiosity.
I'm just wondering if there's a, we could tap into some kind of grant to get, make the road safer.
I did, uh.
Widening the road, a sidewalk, something that could be.
But I don't, like, I think the issue with, like, these narrower roads, there really is no way to widen a lot of them.
Unless you take property.
Yeah.
Well, you'd have to be granted the easement to put, like, a sidewalk in.
No.
A lot of them don't even have that space, especially for a hill.
But unless they voluntarily, if the residents are that concerned, maybe, I don't know.
These grants are competitive, too, so I, I did apply for another traffic grant. We wanted to get some more equipment. They're competitive. It's, we're battling 351 communities in the state for this money.
I'm just trying to think of other options.
So, are there any other questions, or do we just wanna see where we're at with this right now?
I have a comment.
Okay.
So, I mean, while the gentleman's walking up, I'll offer my comment. It'll be, I shall wait since he's halfway here, and I'll be brief.
My name is Mitchell Jordan. I do not live on that road, but that's my dad who spoke earlier, from 2May Street. He's disabled. My mom's been fighting cancer for about six years now, in a wheelchair, can't move. I'm out there probably three times a day. Coming off of that May Street, no matter which way, like my dad said, no matter how you look, by the time you took your foot off your brake, you go, I can't tell you how many times. A lot of it's young drivers and a lot of it's people that are older, but they come down that hill so fast or they come around and by the time you look and you look twice, I see it almost every day because I'm out there so much helping my dad and my mom. And I'm a pretty good judge of that. I'm retired from the State Department of Corrections, so I've, we did a lot of speed checks when I, when I worked for the state at Shirley. So I have a pretty good gauge of it. They're not going 25 miles an hour. They come down the bottom of that hill and they come out. If you don't double check it, you're gonna get nailed. And it's happened so many times. And then what are you gonna do? You know, they look at you and they give you one of these. You know what I mean? They'll drive you right off the road into the woods. And that whole stone fence road, that's about the only road you can walk up for my dad, if you can get across the road and my mom. Because it's, at least that's a quiet little road that goes up. And I believe we have a good friend of mine who's a cop, lives on the street, so that's nice. But that's the only road you can actually walk up there because you feel like you're safe and there isn't so much traffic going on. And I think there is a lot of people cutting through that road. I take it all the time myself to cut over to 2A. I mean, I, I, I don't know what the issue would be, and I'm with them. I said the same thing. Reservoir, 25. Why not 25? Why wait till someone gets killed? I don't want it to happen to my parents. I'm out there. My wife's out there quite a bit to help. My kids go out to help. Someone's out there multiple times. I probably am on that road more than some of the residents because I'm retired from state, so I'm there, you know? I see it every day. Something's got to be done. I don't want to wait till they do their bridge either. I'm with Nate. I know Nate. I see Nate every day. I feel him. I can't pull over and talk to Nate there because there's no room. Even if I pull in Nate's driveway and we're standing there talking, you can just hear him coming. They are not going 25 miles an hour. Very rarely. And I think what you said about the traffic study, when it's that open, they slow down. If it was maybe that little box they put on the road with a couple of wires just to go across, I don't even know how those things work. If it's something inconspicuous, you're going to get more of a better idea of the speed. Everybody knows if you can see it, they're gonna slow down. And you could clearly see it. Like I said, I'm there all the time. I'm there all the time. So. I just wanted to let you know that what they're saying is I see it every day. I'm there. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So where are we at on this right now?
My, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You know, I think, I think it's important. Sometimes, you know, when we have people in front of us and they're upset and they're angry and, you know, I think it's natural to want to, to side with them. But I think it's always important to be objective in our, in our viewpoints. No matter what we do. In this case, however, I mean, I think we have to be real. I mean, we're, you know, I, I want to be as respectful as I can to who's sitting in front of me. But, I mean, you know, unless there's Benjamin Button going on here, I mean, we're, we're being faced by members of our community that are, for the most part, seniors. For the most part, people who've lived here, probably as long as I have, since I was 10 years old, who, who've seen the town add another 4,000, 5,000 people since they've owned homes. And that a road that used to be walkable when their kids were there, when they were, you know, you know, working before they retired, now it's not walkable. And, and so they've lost something. You know, they've lost that sense of walkability in their neighborhood. And I know as, you know, it's important for us to be active. It's important for us to walk. I, I, I'm, I look forward to the traffic survey, but even without it, I'm in support of their request. So that's where I'm at.
Anyone else?
I am for the chief. I hear everybody's talking and I, you know, and I don't, I understand their position, but we also have a professional who deals in this. And I'd like to see the data. I would like it to be blind if we can. I think the residents make a good point that if it's visible, people slow down. There are two, from my perspective, there are two uses to that sign. One is to tell people in a posted area, not where people are looking to reduce it, but in a posted area that they're just going too fast. And you want them to just slow down. And then there's areas where people are saying they're going too fast and I want to know what they're really doing so I can take the right course. And I'd like it to be a blind test in that case so I can get real data. So, and, but until there's real data, I don't, you know, I don't want to act on it because I don't think, otherwise we'll have lots of petitions all over and I'm not really sure that's the proper way to handle street sign limits. I think it's unfortunate. Like I said, I cannot, I'd love to walk out of my own property. I cannot because Lancaster Avenue is impossible street to walk on. My neighbors who are elderly walked on it until they moved to Stone Farm, the Stone Farm Estates. And I don't know how they didn't because with their mobility, they walked the blind corner all the time. And I just held my breath every time I saw them walking. So there are just some streets that are just not walkable in this town. I wish it weren't that. I really wish it were.
Anyone else?
So I also would like to see the data and try to make it less conspicuous that it's being captured to get true human behavior. And I'd also like to explore, I don't know if anyone's familiar with the, the permanent flashy signs on 117 in Bolton? Cause again, even if the speed limit is lowered, I still would worry about, that's not, people don't obey signs all the time. And, and if, if those flashy signs really are a good deterrent, if there's some way, I don't know how we could, you know, find money or grant some, I don't know. But it's something I think we should keep on the radar.
All right. So it sounds like we don't want to do anything yet until we have a new traffic study, which I agree with. And this one also will be a little longer. So the one that was done, I think it was over the course of like three days. So this would be a little more data too than we had from the one that was done in 2021. In terms of the actual speed limit, I mean, it's kind of hard for me to justify Reservoir Road having a lower speed limit than Flat Hill Road.
For the record, I was against that because I didn't understand how, when that was lowered, I didn't understand where that came from. It was, I think it was the two years I wasn't on the board because I never would have approved that because of this situation.
Right. Well, regardless, it is.
Right. It is now. Right. So.
So that's just honestly my first impression on that. But I think there's a broader conversation to be had about safety on these more narrow roads that maybe we can actually really look into. You know, like what can we do other than decreasing the speed limit to actually make these roads a little more safe?
And get people to comply.
Yeah.
But that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. So I think that's where we're at for today, right?
So no action. Just to be clear.
Yes.
We're taking no action.
We're taking no action today.
We saw the hundreds of signatures and we say, so bad, so sad, another day. Just, I mean, I'm rewording it, but that's essentially what we're doing.
It is, yeah. Thank you everyone for coming in tonight and we will revisit this when we get more data. Thank you. All right. Let's go back to the town manager report.
Do you see that cloud out there?
Yes.
Look up there. Just giving it a second.
Yeah.
Okay. I will start with announcements, one that's already been discussed. The town beach is still currently closed due to bacteria levels. And as Ms. Menard said, those are being tested. So that was tested Friday, yesterday and today. So as they're doing their testing, those levels are getting better. So it is looking like it's moving in the positive direction. So we hope that the beach is back open by the weekend. Representative Scarsdale will be holding office hours on Monday, July 22 at 3:00 PM at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. For Board Committee Commission vacancies, there is one vacancy on the Agricultural Commission, one vacancy on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, a Board of Health vacancy, which is a joint appointment with the Board of Health until the next annual town election. Capital Planning Committee has one vacancy appointed by the town moderator. Cultural Council has three vacancies. Green Communities Committee has two associate vacancies. Historical Commission has one vacancy. Open Space Committee has one member at large vacancy. Personnel Committee has five vacancies. And the Sewer Commission has two vacancies, which are joint, is a joint appointment with the Sewer Commission until the next annual town election. And we did receive resignation from Bob Pease of the Conservation Commission today. That was effective immediately. So that will be another posted vacancy that the executive assistant will take care of. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the volunteer application form on the town website, complete it and return it to the select board's office. And that will get disseminated to the appropriate boards if anyone submits completed applications. And if you have any questions on these roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For employment opportunities with the town, we have the Administrative Assessing Assistant for 32 hours a week, Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager, 19 hours a week, Assessor Data Collector, which is a new position in the fiscal 25 budget for 19 hours a week, the interim town manager, which is contractual, Land Use Director, 40 hours a week, Network Administrator, 40 hours a week, Public Safety Desk Clerk, which is 40 hours a week, and Seasonal Cemetery Labor, which those hours vary. Information on each of these positions can be found on the town website under Job Opportunities. The board had asked for an update at meetings on the Conservation Department with the backlog of applications. Since the last update last week, there are now 14 decisions that have not been drafted or issued where the commission voted between November 1st, 2023 and July 1st, 2024. For filings between July 1st, 2023 and November 1st, 2023, that do not appear to have any documents issued, that is now down to 10. Since there will be two back-to-back commission meetings this week and next, there likely will not be progress for the next couple of weeks for the work that needs to be done for those meetings. But I want to thank Brian Jengress for his work with the Conservation Department and his staff for helping out with that backlog. Request for proposals and invitation for bids. The bids for the Library Solar Shade Project are due July 31st. The bids for the Trash and Recycling Services are due July 24th. We have worked with the OPM for the Marshall Park Project to prepare the RFP for Design Services for Phase 1 of the Marshall Park Redevelopment Project, which includes all construction related to the park grant. And this, those funds need to be expended by June 30th, 2025. And this RFP will be advertised on June 17th and will be due August 8th. The Mass Historical Commission provided a template for the request for quotations that will need to go out to bid in August for the $12,500 grant that the Historical Commission received for the survey of historical properties from the Mass Historical Commission. I updated all the information in the RFQ for this project last week and sent that back to MHC for review. Once they approve, the Assistant Town Manager can update the dates for posting and the deadline for receiving quotes. The Assistant Town Manager and Facilities Director completed their review of the invitation for bids for the Senior Center Roof Project and it is now before me for final review before it can get posted. My goal is to have this complete prior to my departure. An update on Unitil's Electric Sector Modernization Plan. I met with John Denaply, who is our Municipal and Community Service Manager from Unitil on July 10th. And he brought forth that we would soon see information about Unitil's Electric Sector Modernization Plan in the near future. This plan includes two substation upgrades, one at 934 Mass Ave and one on Leominster Shirley Road. The one at 934 Mass Ave is planned to be started in 2025 and operational by 2026. It will include a new transformer that will increase reliability in this area and allow for additional solar to be added to this area without increasing risk to the infrastructure. Unitil is currently looking to add a new substation in the Leominster Shirley Road area that will interconnect to the National Grid network. So they're working with National Grid on that. And this is expected to begin in 2027 and projected to be a two-year build out. This substation will help future development in that area. Unitil will be hosting an in-person educational meeting as well as virtual, as well as a virtual meeting. And they're looking to hold the in-person meeting in a town or school building. I've put John in touch with Liz Peterson from the school and with the library director regarding the community room. The estimated timeframe for these meetings will be the week of August 12th. Change in payroll procedure. This week, a change in payroll cycle went into effect. A notice was sent out to all employees in June notifying them with the changes that would take place and go into effect starting on July 15th. This change includes changing the payroll from paying in advance to paying in arrears and the date the payroll is processed. Smart Growth Funding. I emailed the Select Board, Finance Committee, Board of Assessors, School Committee and related staff about an informational guidance release that was put out by the Division of Local Services in the spring about submitting a request for smart growth funding as the town may be eligible again based on the updated reports that will need to be submitted. The two deadlines that the relevant staff and boards need to be aware of are September 1st and September 15th. By September 1st, the Board of Assessors must provide the local reporting officers with the additional property tax and motor vehicle excise revenues generated by smart growth parcels. By September 15th, the local reporting officer must submit to DLS a request for a Chapter 40S reimbursement by reporting the local smart growth property tax and excise tax revenues for the previous fiscal year. And that local reporting officer is appointed by the Select Board. Update on Chapter 90 Funding and Fiscal 24 Fair Share Funding. As previously reported, the DPW Director would be submitting a request to Mass DOT to use Chapter 90 funds on an air compressor for not $24, but $24,000. Be nice if it was $24. And engineering for the sidewalks that includes Oak Ave that was originally in the ARPA funding commitment. The preapproval amount with Mass DOT for this project for the sidewalks is $119,020. Also preapproved by Mass DOT for Chapter 90 reimbursement is $710,312 in resurfacing various roads. In Fiscal 24, we received $418,065 in our Chapter 90 allotment. If the board remembers, we also received $240,503 in fair share funding, an additional $21,979 in supplemental funding. And that was a total of $680,547 in Fiscal 24. The Fiscal 25 Chapter 90 Funding is $418,227. It was decided by the state that the fair share funding would be treated in the same way that the route funding was treated at the end of Fiscal 23, that instead of being a reimbursement, that would get directly deposited with the municipalities. So that was done in late June and that is open and will not be closed out until it's fully expended. Delegation of a Chief Procurement Officer. The Assistant Town Manager, HR Director recently requested her designation be changed from Associate of MCPPO, which is Mass Certified Public Procurement Official, to a full status and this was approved. With my pending departure, I'm delegating the Chief Procurement Officer duties to the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director as of August 1st. The town is required to have a Chief Procurement Officer to conduct requests for proposals, which we have pending in upcoming RFPs. This will also allow the board to choose an interim town manager that does not have their MCPPO certification. Review of Draft Financial Policy Manual. The Draft Financial Policy Manual has been sent out to the Finance Committee, School Committee, School Superintendent, Board of Assessors, Principal Assessor and Capital Planning Committee for review. Input was asked to be solicited at their next posted meeting and an update with their comments sent to the Select Board Chair and Executive Assistant. And lastly, we had a employee appreciation luncheon yesterday. And this was to show a sign of appreciation and that all employees' work is appreciated and valued. Too often we hear criticisms instead of words of appreciation and this event was meant to be a gesture of gratitude for their work. Yesterday's event, the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director also put together all employees that were receiving a five-year increment anniversary and we handed out certificates for the following people. This is a list, but I think it's worth reading. For five years of service, Paige Gengler from the Recreation Department, Jared Bowser from the Recreation Department, Robert Walsh from DPW, Lydia Gravel from the Library, Anthony Capucci from the Police Department, Cheryl Stillman from the Library, Julie Beliveau from the Town Manager's Office. For 10 years of service, Timothy Downey from the Fire Department, Elsa Watson from the Council on Aging, John Morielli from the Police Department, Skylar Kozlinski from the Fire Department, Livia Hayes from the Fire Department. 15 years of service, Austin Flag from the Fire Department. For 20 years of service, Andrea Snuff from the Board of Health. 25 years of service, Jason Boyle from the Fire Department. 30 years of service, Susan Doherty from the Council on Aging, Scott Dillon from the Fire Department and Peter Hyatt from the Fire Department. 40 years of service, Lisa Normden from the Building Department. And 45 years of service to the town, Kathleen Como from the Police Department as the Animal Control Officer and Kathy Herrick, a town clerk.
Wow. Wow.
Any questions for the town manager?
I have, I have one. Just going back to the smart growth funding, the local reporting officer. He's mentioned that's appointed by the Select Board.
Yes.
Are you currently the local reporting officer?
I think I assumed we're probably.
Okay.
But the actual work was done by the assessors previously to submit those reports to the state. So, but I think the town manager would be probably a point of contact or the finance director could be another.
Okay.
Appropriate person.
I just don't want to miss that deadline.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. I can't believe this is probably the last town manager report I'm going to hear since I'm out next week and then we don't have a meeting in, in August. So, uh, I guess I can save things to public comment, but I will say it has been an absolute pleasure. And, uh, you know, these reports have been so helpful. I know you're the ones who started this upon your tenure, somewhere in the beginning of your tenure. And it has been so helpful for the town to hear what's going on. Prior than that, there was no compilation of this. So thank you for all of these reports and keeping us up to date on all these projects all along the way for, I don't know, you should compile these into a book with seven and a half years of town manager reports.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go down to old business now. First is review amendments to draft teen center lease agreement. So I looked through it and it looks like everything has been resolved. So I looked through it, and it looks like everything has been resolved, is that right, Heather?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any, any points in the agreement that anyone on the Board wants to discuss?
I reviewed it, I was fine with it.
Okay.
Same as with me.
Nope, it's good.
All right, is there a motion?
I have a question on the motion.
Okay.
Why do we need to do a motion if the Town Manager has control of the use of intent of town buildings?
I was, maybe I'm just wrong here. Do we need to vote on this?
Um, I don't think it hurts for the Board to take a vote on this. Yeah, but I'm fine with executing this on my own as well.
I'd move, I'd move to approve the, the draft, approve the teen center lease agreement as presented and amended.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, interim Town Manager search. Is there anything that we want to discuss on that today? I am still accepting questions for the interview, if anyone wants to send them to me tonight. I have some that Julie is going to be sending, so I'm going to be working to put together a format for it, but just FYI, it's something that is still.
I didn't send them, Mr. Chair, because I, A, we didn't discuss how the format was going to be, and, and as it, and as we didn't, it's my personal feeling in interviews and having interviewed people for positions not only in town but even in the private sector. I'm not for a strict format. If we had the same questions we were going to ask everybody, then I would ask that, we asked them to send them in writing to get their answers to a set number of questions, but I'd rather ask people questions, and I think each of their resumes, as they come up, will, will dictate certain questions that won't be applicable necessarily to all of them. So that's why I didn't submit any.
All right, what do other members think?
Yeah, I think there might be, you know, a few questions that are common across the Board, but I can definitely see questions that may not be asked exactly the same across all candidates, depending on, on their, their CVs and experience.
And one of the other things, of course, because it has to be done in an open meeting, the other candidates could come early and be here or watch it live on Facebook, and so they'll be prepared for the questions. So you're going to be surprising the first person and not anybody else.
But there's definitely like topics that we want to ask that's kind of like standardized across all the candidates.
Sure. But I think those, I mean, I, again, it's too late now because we're having some interviews tomorrow, but those would be the kind of questions you'd want them to answer in writing. I think maybe not so much for the interim, but when we get to the, the permanent Town Manager, I mean, writing and writing ability is something that you want to see anyway. So how people write is very important and how clear they write. So just my, again, just one vantage point.
Sure.
I've never had to do an interview in public like this before, and any of my interview experience, you know, just with the police department and with interns or other people that were coming in, it was always standardized questions just to get the same information, but I don't know how that works in this type of environment.
Yeah.
I think we should at least definitely have a baseline with the ability to add and follow-up questions that are.
Yeah, so the format that I have that I was working with as a draft, there were 10 minutes for topics that I sort of set aside for us to talk about, and that built in the opportunity for the Board to ask follow-up questions relating to that topic. And then the final 10 minutes were, was an opportunity for any sort of questions that people wanted to ask.
How long for each candidate, total?
Forty-five minutes in total, because they're going to start at the top of the hour.
Yep.
Right? So I was thinking five minutes for introductions, 10 minutes for, I don't have it written down anywhere, but, you know, just common topics that I think we're going to want to ask about 10 minutes each, and then the final 10 minutes was an opportunity for them to ask us questions and then for us to ask any final questions, so.
Do we know yet if all candidates will be able to be present the same night, or will this span more than one night?
It's kind of a complicated question. They weren't all available in one night, but as it's currently scheduled, we only have it scheduled for one night, which is tomorrow night, so.
I'm just thinking whoever's on the, the second night.
Yeah, that's part of the reason, yeah, yep.
Yeah.
And also, there were issues with some candidates having to come in in person versus others only being able to come in and Zoom after we said that we preferred them to be in person. So people who were scheduled to come in person, who, you know, we didn't really give the opportunity to come in and Zoom because they initially responded, said, yes, I'm available on Wednesday, you know, there was that issue too. So I don't know, there were a lot of things that went into actually scheduling it, so. But yeah, we are scheduled for two tomorrow night.
So we start at 7:00 or 6:00?
So we're trying to see if we can start at 7:00.
Okay.
Six, it's posted for six.
It is posted for six, yes, but didn't we discuss trying to see if we could get one to?
I think moving the eight o'clock to the seven.
Oh, I see, sorry, I'm just misunderstanding that, yeah. So we would move the eight o'clock.
So we should plan on six. I just need to know, so I, I don't know what time I have to leave to.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, could I address four questions? And I'll tell you how we, and I'm familiar with the process with interviewing or how the town conducts interviews, is standardized questions. It's providing equal questions to all applicants, so it doesn't look like there's preferential treatment one way or the other, that you're asking different questions to the same pool of candidates. And I think there's the opportunity to ask follow-up questions that clarify based on their answers and their experience that you can, but they, in my opinion, there should be standardized questions.
So I went back and watched Heather's interview.
I haven't gotten back and watched.
And the, the interim Town Manager interviews that happened before. And there were different questions. Actually, you were on the Board at that time for the interim, too, yeah.
I didn't replay it.
Um.
I was, I was there.
It's from 2016.
It was when Heather just got out of high school.
Thank you.
So we can't, you're saying we can't do that anymore, or it's just not advised?
That's our, that's our process when we interview candidates for any position, is standardized questions.
Okay. We have, we have standardized, HR or recruiter call is a standardized tent to basically qualify the candidates as far as salary expectation or in-office policy, are they able to work in the US with, you know, things that aren't applicable to this particular case, but, but then when it gets to the team interview, we can ask anything we want.
Well, you still technically can, but maybe this is just coincidental, but in my experience, all the companies that I've worked for after college had some sort of like determined template, right, where you would ask the questions, and then you could also ask follow-up questions, you could add your own questions, but there was a core set of questions and topics with, you know, a blocked out time for 10 minutes each for each topic or something like that. So maybe that's just coincidental, but that's always been my interview experience.
I think the topics are probably obvious.
Sorry, what?
I think the topics are obvious.
I don't understand, what do you mean?
The topics to cover in the question.
Well, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not against having several questions. I don't know how many questions people are thinking about, especially in 10 minutes. You know, to some people, one question is 10 minutes, to other people, three questions is 10 minutes. I don't think you fit more than three questions for somebody to answer in 10 minutes unless they're yes or no questions, because I'm assuming you want to, and this is, I think, a style of interviewing, you want people to talk. I don't want to give them yes or no questions because that's kind of pointless.
Yeah, I agree with that, but I think I would still favor like some sort of standardized format for all the candidates.
So, if I may, so I agree wholeheartedly, but I mean, we got to be real, we got less than 24 hours to get there. So I mean, what do we need to do between now and tomorrow evening? My recommendation may be that if there's not enough time to compile them, that perhaps we all come with four questions or five questions, and if they're asked by someone else, we ask one at a time, and if one of our questions gets asked, then we cross off the list and move on. But that way, we end up after the first round of this with a standardized set, and then we continue that set as we go forward. That may be a way to get there between now and tomorrow, but I agree that standardized questions usually, it's, it's more fair. You get to evaluate how people answered those questions, you can rate how well they answered the questions, so it really opens the door to being able to do side-by-side comparisons of, of how one person answered versus another. But I think we also have to consider more than just the questions. We also have to, as we do our assessment of it all, you know, we have to consider demeanor, we have to consider communication skills. I mean, there's, there's other things that I think factor in aside from just how well they answer the questions, but, I mean, I haven't sent you any questions, I can see Amanda's note, it looks like none of us have actually sent you any questions yet, so, I mean, do we really have time between now and tomorrow to send them to you? Or, or, I mean, what I'm suggesting again is that we just.
Yes, but that's okay if we don't, that's fine.
All right.
So, so what do we want to do? Do we just want to all come prepared with our own questions and?
Heather, is Julie, if I may, does, have you and Julie worked on any questions by chance, or has Julie?
Julie was going to send them to me, and she may have since we were here, because I know we talked about it.
She has, yes, yeah. That wasn't the expectation. It was supposed to be the Board members were going to be providing the questions, so when we discussed it today, she elicited some questions, so those have been sent by Julie. So maybe a suggestion would be those can be disseminated, you can rate your top 10, because I think between eight and 10 is probably the most questions you're going to ask for 45 minutes.
Yep.
All right, does that work for people?
Unless you want to insert your own.
Lack of anything else, sure.
I mean, I haven't seen the questions, and I may have one that I think is, no offense to Julie, but something I would rather ask rather than what's printed, so I mean.
I think it's at least a good starting point, since we're, I'm sure on time, and she did do the work to put it together.
Yeah.
And we can always pick a question from one that, I mean, we're all basically getting one or two questions, right? And so, I mean, if we were to communicate via email, and I'm trying to think, how can we do this legally, but if we were to communicate via email and someone were to say, hey, I'll take questions one and five, and then someone else says, hey, I'm taking question three, but I'm going to reword in, you know, question number seven. I mean, we can get to a consensus, you know, before tomorrow evening, but can we do that?
I can.
I don't know, I mean, it's, again, it's coming up and I'm out of the, I'm on-site at a job now, so it's not easy for me to pull, pull away like it was in the past, so, you know. And also, if we're going to have a set number of questions, then I would forego the, we're going to round robin the questions, because that seems like a pointless exercise. So if we have the same questions, we should have one person ask the questions and listen, because they're all going to be the same, so what, whether they're going to hear somebody else's voice, I mean, what's, what's the, I don't understand the.
Well, it's, part of it is it's a two-way interview, right? So they can also sort of interact with us and hear us speak, it's engaging for everyone on the Board, so I think there's some benefit to that.
And taking lead in follow-up questions as well.
Well, no, but follow-up questions, I understand. If there are follow-up questions, I get that they would come from the whole Board.
Yeah.
And have you built in time for them to ask us questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Have you, have you built in time to allow them, the candidate, to ask us questions?
Yes. All right, so I really think we need to just make a decision here. So do we want to at least all review Julie's list? If you want to send me questions, you can, and if you want to come prepared with your own questions as well, then that'll just work, so.
That sounds fine.
Sure.
But everybody that sends questions, they have to send them, I think.
Just to me, yep. All right. Anything else we want to talk about for interim Town Manager?
So two people.
Sorry, what?
Two people tomorrow?
Yes.
Do, we didn't, one of the things we didn't talk about, and it's on for the, the permanent Town Manager, it's like, what are we, I mean, in case they ask, did we post what the pay is?
It's on our agenda.
Are you talking about the interim?
Yeah.
Because you're, the agenda type topic here is Town Manager salary.
Yeah, that's the, that's the permanent, right.
I mean, we can talk about both there, I was planning on talking about both.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, do you want to just go down to the next agenda item? Do you want to just move into that now? All right, so I did hear from Julie today, and she informed me of the total amount of money that we have through fiscal year 25 for both the interim and permanent Town Manager role, so it's probably going to be very relevant, and that amount is $138,500.
But we can always supplement with ARPA if we needed to, right? Because, yeah.
Not a salary, not a, not a recurring salary, at least, that would be.
On the interim, that.
Yeah.
There's also a caveat to that, which Julie included, was that includes, so that's the balance of the Town Manager's salary line and the salary reserve account, which was of that amount was, I think it was $38,000. And that includes funding that was also set aside for DPW union negotiations. I don't know if we'll be at the point, because they're still in the process of their election to change their representation, so obviously, negotiations will not even begin to start until that process is complete and they have a new representation, so it may not be possible that be done in time for November town election for town meeting.
So how, you said 138, that included both of those numbers?
Yes.
Didn't we just start the town, the fiscal year?
Yes, yep.
So it seems.
Low.
Right. It seems like it doesn't even cover your existing salary.
Yeah.
Well, there's, in the contract, I mean, we've got to remember that there's, you know, a month of pay plus vacation plus deferred compensation, so.
That's a separate line.
Okay. So some of that, you know, is going to be a little lower.
Well, as I said, the vacation pay is a different question, but still, we're going to be looking for at least somebody at the same level and an interim and then somebody, and it seems like, I don't know that we have enough money to get to June 30th with those numbers.
Well, I, I think we do. I mean, I, I mean, I think, Tom, how we can get there is I think we can, we can use ARPA funds, just as we did to bring in Rena on the Assessor's Office to provide some support and others, that, you know, an interim Town Manager could be fully funded by the ARPA funds. That means that that remaining, you know, amount, we don't touch, we don't know how soon we're going to have a Town Manager, but, you know, current Town Manager compensation is about $13,000 a month, and so, I mean, if we don't hire a Town Manager until October or so, there's only 10 months at that point, eight months left in the year, so I mean, I think that we can potentially get there.
Or you'll be requesting supplemental funding at the special town meeting.
Can you say that again? I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Or the other option, if it's available, requesting supplemental funding at the special town meeting.
In the form?
From, but from where? We don't usually.
That's why I said if available.
Right.
It depends on what new growth comes in at, where.
Okay. So what are we looking at for the interim? What are we looking at?
It's for us to decide.
I, I understand that. That's why I posed the question to the Board.
Well, I mean, the current Town Manager's salary at, you know, 13 roughly, $13,000, it's all, it's obviously more than that, but $13,000 roughly a month, and so I think, I don't know historically if interims are paid more or less, I would assume less, but I don't actually know, but I think that, you know, on an interim basis, something in that range could work, 10 to 13.
Mr. Chair, through you to the Town Manager, do you have knowledge whether interims, because I don't even recall this, whether interims, because I don't remember what we paid the interim before we hired you, I guess we could look it up, but I mean.
Uh, just from hearsay, I think typically their rates are higher because you're not paying for health insurance or anything like that.
I would say at the very least, it's on par with what the current salary would be.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking, but any higher, I don't know if I really think we should at this point, but. But any higher, I don't know if I really think we should at this point, but what do we think about it?
We may not have choices. We have to know what a range is because if we have two people and if we, depending on how many other people we interview, we need to know what they're, what they would, because it's, some people in their applications talked about, oh, it'll be a part-time job and 20 hours. I mean, so that's a trade-off, maybe, I mean, that's not something I'm looking for, but, you know, it's gonna be a trade-off between time and money.
But Heather, sorry.
I just want to make a correction because I'm going back to Julie's email. The 130, 522, that's what's left in the town manager line.
Yep. Thanks, all right, thank you.
The $38,000 in the salary reserve account.
Okay, so 176 altogether, okay.
No, ma'am.
But, but please take into account the DPW, like, that's what that was planned for, just so you have that in the back of your mind.
Well, so all the benefits, I mean, you know, typically, all the benefits come to about, you know, 20%, right? When we think about what someone's base pay is in a month, the benefit addition is usually about 20%-ish. And that range is not quite exact. So, I mean, you know, if we were in the $13,000 range and we capped it out at 15, to me, that's an appropriate range. If the concern is no health insurance, you know, which is like $1,000 a month for family plan, but being overly generous, you know, no kind of retirement compensation or contribution, so, you know, 5% of 13. So if we were 13 to 15, to me, that seems to be the range that we're currently in. And if someone comes back with a salary request, because we can also ask, I mean, that's something that also gets considered, that if someone's asking for $20,000 and someone else is asking for 15, you know.
Then I can answer that, well, if they're smart, then I can answer that in a public, a public get it.
No, but they, but we should find a mechanism for them to provide their salary requirements.
So we're looking in the 40 to 50,000 dollar range for a three-month contract for the interim?
30, yeah, 30 to 45, yep, with those numbers that we're just giving. Yep, 13 to 15, so 40 to 45.
All right.
Which sounds reasonable.
Yep. So for the permanent role, does anyone have strong opinions about what that range should be now or?
I, yes. I think that we need to seriously think about $200,000 as a, as a goal. I think it's, based on what I've been looking up outside of here, seeing, you know, we know that Townsend lives right next door to us. They have a charter that's very similar to us. And they lost a town manager who went somewhere else for, I think, 210 or 20. And I think that town manager was making about 170 or 75.
The town manager of Concord, who was our town manager, just up her contract and she makes 225. And that's in Town of Concord, which is one of the most wealthy towns in, in the Commonwealth. So I don't think, 200 does not sound, to me, that would be the upper range if the person could get close to walking on water. I think it's too high. I think the people that we're looking at, if I've looked at their salaries, some of the people who, in their permanent jobs and the jobs they were in, and some of them have permanent jobs, are not at that range, you know. I think it's between the current one and, let's say, 185 would be a reasonable range, somewhere between 160 and 185. Depending on what their experience is and whether they're coming up or whether they've been town manager or what jobs they've had before.
Have we ever done any comp analysis on the town manager role?
Heather did during her last contract. And I don't want to summarize, but I mean, I think what, I'll summarize. I mean, Heather was the lowest paid by a notable amount. And, you know, and I, we needed to go higher than we probably did in our current contract with Heather, but, I mean, we didn't. So I think that at that time, if you recall Heather, I think most things you showed us was about a 175 was kind of the median, if I remember correctly.
Right, three years ago.
And that was three years ago. So we have to consider inflation over the last three years. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think that the 200 number I gave was too far off, but neither is maybe the 185 number that, that Tom just said.
All right.
I think the value of a town manager from what we may think it is, we have to consider, like, you know, long-term. Like, there's a lot of downsides to the job too, which is every time they meet and meet with us, it's in a public meeting. Someone could look it up forever. It never goes away, you know, that, that you could really ruin someone's reputation if you have a board member that flatly sucks. You know, so, I mean, there's a lot of downside, there's more obviously than that. But there's a whole, the whole public component to the job, it comes with a certain cost. And then it's the skill set behind it, which is what does it cost to get a master's degree? If you got that master's degree in your 40s, that's a lot of money. And, and why did you get it? You got to be qualified for the job. So, I mean, I've done a little bit of digging into like what this is going to cost. But my opinion is I, I think, I think 185 may be the floor, but it's gonna be costly.
All right.
And there's a lot of vacancies, which is also something to consider, is that a lot of communities are looking for town managers. And, you know, if we want a town manager from a similar-sized community, similar-sized communities are paying more money. It's the smaller communities that are paying less, and not even that much less. We're paying about what we're paying to our current town manager. And I don't think Heather's salary has been on par with our town. I've been pretty vocal about that, but, so I think we have to be realistic as we go forward. And I think we have to consider superintendent of schools, not that it's two comparable jobs, but I'm, I'm pretty sure the superintendent of schools and her business manager were making more money than the town manager was. And that's a negative against our community because there's, you have a lot more departments. There's a lot more, you know, I'm not saying there's a lot more to do, but I'm saying it's a more, it's a very different job. And it's, you know, so I think we need to be mindful of that component as well.
All right. So I will continue to think about it because I don't-
Job is paid more than, or the same, so that's not uncommon.
It's not uncommon?
For superintendents to make a decent amount of money.
To make on par or even in some cases more than a town manager, it's not uncommon. From what I, again, I've researched it too, so, and so, it goes town by town, it goes by experience level, it goes by the kind of school district they are, and, you know, and there is really no comparison between the two jobs.
As the screening committee said when they want a range to be decided by?
Well, they're meeting tomorrow to finalize an ad. They'd like to put something if possible. Otherwise, they're just gonna say salary commensurate with experience, which, until they get to that point, we don't know what that's gonna mean. I don't know if people, again, I don't think it's going to, some people were of the belief that it will limit the number of people applying because it doesn't have a set salary. Other places, there are two other places in Massachusetts that are looking for a town manager. They did not have salaries in there either. They said something similar. So I don't, I think people can look at what the current is and know that it's at least gonna be that or higher. I don't think you're gonna, or they'll just negotiate for it. I mean, they'll just say, we've had people in past town manager searches come and we negotiated with them and then we couldn't meet what they were looking for, or it was higher than what our range was and we had to go back and get finance approval, had everybody's approval to do it, so. I can't say with enough experience if, and maybe, again, I would defer to Heather, does the listing of the salary limit the candidates or not in your mind?
I think it may.
Okay, but, okay, but I could've said it.
But anyone seriously interested in it will look up what the current salary is and do homework on what the town's financial position is.
May we ask Heather what Heather thinks the salary should be?
I don't feel comfortable answering that question.
Okay.
My other concern is, again, you know, even, even if some of the salaries, this is a snowball effect in other, you saw the listings and the positions we still have to fill and, you know, and we just passed an override. And then, again, it's, we're in really, we're still in crazy times right now as far as like salaries and across the board. I mean, not only in municipal, but government, but, I mean, schools and, and private sector. It's just what people are getting is pretty wild.
So are we okay with not including a salary range in the posting?
I'd rather put a floor in.
The other thing we said is we were gonna indicate what the current town manager is, salary was, because that's public record anyway. Just as a, we was gonna say, current town manager is this, but salary commensurate with experience and-
I think that works.
So we can, I mean, I'm not going to be at that meeting because I want to be at this meeting tomorrow. And I've told the moderator that, but we can convey that, I can convey that.
Yeah. What do other people think about that?
I would leave salary out altogether if you're not, if you're gonna put, not put a range, I would just leave it all out.
I mean, I think most people probably who are applying to these things are gonna be watching the previous select board meetings in full.
Certainly I would.
I would hope they would.
And I think they're gonna kind of have a clue, so.
All right. Anything else we want to discuss on this tonight? All right.
So, did we decide what we're gonna do? Are we gonna give them a range? Are we gonna?
It doesn't sound like we are, no.
All right, salary commensurate with experience.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just our recommendation. Isn't it up to the screening committee ultimately?
No, no, we can't, we can't put, like, we can't make up the salary.
No, 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 but whether or not to put a range in or not, if we, we can give a range.
Yes.
It sounds like we-
It would be our option if we knew the range to put it in or not. That would be under our purview, but if we don't have a range, we can't make one up.
It sounded like we were getting close to a range.
I will offer this as a comment. I think maybe leaving it salary commensurate with experience based on what is available for funding at this point, that, that may be a better option. And then when you select a candidate and start negotiations with them, you can see where that salary falls and then if you, what options you have at that point.
All right. Works for me. Anything else we want to talk about for this?
No.
No, all right. Discussion on tax investigation report.
I don't have an update this week. I still owe the board additional information.
Discussion on outdoor dining policy. I also do not have the draft for that tonight, so we're gonna push it back. Review remaining ARPA funding and committed funds. Heather, are there any updates for committed funds?
The finance director updated the table to include additional interest. And so that's the most updated version of funding levels. So that's the other, we, last week it was, I think, 295 available. And now it's three, around 313, 313,000. And that communication went out through the townwide email last night to solicit requests. And the IT administrative assistant posted it on Facebook for nonprofits. We do not have a list. And I created a distribution group, selectboard@hunenbergma.gov to, for requests to come in.
Who does that distribution list go to? Does it just go to the chair or does it go to?
No, it goes to the five board members, myself and Annie.
Okay, great.
All right, any questions about ARPA?
Aside from the comment that, you know, again, it's getting closer and closer. We are five months from when we need all these committed.
Well, we're gonna start getting requests and so.
Has that been gone out?
It has, yep. Heather just said that.
I missed that. I was probably reading.
That's fine. All right, draft financial policy manual. So Heather sent this out to all the relevant departments and boards. And they will be giving feedback to me and Annie. Is there anything else you want to say about that, Heather?
No, that was covered in my town manager report as well. I met with the finance committee Thursday night. There were some minor questions on whether this ultimately would supersede other, the other financial policies. In my opinion, it would because it's replacing, whatever the board adopts for this would be replacing existing policies. But I think that you would be doing that with certain boards as a consensus as far as such policies, the overlay, and other ones that you can do, you can search the policy manual for all the different groups. So I've identified that for each group, which policies that they're mentioned in the pages. So they have all that information for their meetings.
All right. Boarding committee handbook. Heather, what do you?
No update, just that I wanted to keep that on the board's radar. And I still need to get that out to all the town boards and committees.
All right, moving on to disposition of 925 Mass Ave. So you wanted to add this to the agenda, I'm assuming it's because we didn't really discuss after our presentation sort of what we wanted to do.
Correct. This was one of the action items that needs to take place before that property goes out to bid. And that was one of the action items that was discussed by VSC at the June meeting, the presentation. So the board needs to vote to declare this surplus property that is, will be disposed. You can put a preference on it. So we did have the assessment done and the structural engineer's report said that the property could be salvageable. So that seems to be the-
Property meaning the building?
The building. That the building is salvageable or could be renovated. So that's the preference for that to be first option, that can be included in the vote.
So finally, is the building, I'm assuming it's in the boundaries of the historical district. Is the building over 75 years old?
The APDC has already met and said this is not within their purview.
Excellent. Because that's definitely gonna, thank you. The reason why I asked was, because I understand that historical designations on buildings affects redevelopment opportunities. Usually it minimizes them. I have to abstain from anything, I can talk about 925 Mass Ave, but I can't vote on anything with 925 Mass Ave.
So does anyone have an opinion on?
I'm fine with, you know, declaring it surplus and offering it, you know, for sale with those restrictions, as the town manager just said, that it all sounds, I didn't know we needed a vote, so.
Yeah.
But if we need a vote, then I am for that proposition.
Okay.
And if, and if we need to, I will make that a motion.
Are we ready to make the motion? All right, go ahead, make the motion. You did?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Ayes, Dave.
Oh, my apologies. Any abstentions?
Aye.
Okay. So the motion passes four, zero to zero?
To one.
To one.
To one. Sorry.
Sorry.
All right. Moving on.
It's getting late.
It is getting late. Moving on to public communications policy. So this is something that Selectman Jeffries wanted to add to the agenda, so I'll pass it off to him.
Thank you. So I, I sent it earlier and let me just find the email because I know I couldn't send it too much in advance. This is a very short policy. Let me just forward it right now to the whole board. So Renee, Tom, Heather, and Amanda. So this is a really short policy. I thought of it in the last couple of days and thinking about an email that we, that we had received. So I'm proposing Section 2.13 to be a public communications policy to read as follows. Really short. All written public statements and press releases unrelated to emergency situations, community events, and community services must be approved by the select board prior to its issuance. So I think it's important for the board to communicate things that are unrelated to the public emergencies and, you know, road situations, promoting public community events. And that anything outside of that realm, in my opinion, should come from the select board. So I'm proposing that to be a policy 2.13.
So the exceptions, I just want to read it out loud here again. Emergency situations, community events, community services, and that's it. Those are the explicit exceptions.
So community services would be most of government functions, and I think, like, you know, if there's a disruption in trash. you know, if there's a disruption in trash, you know, that would be something that I think would be communicated, like a community service. If a beach is closed, for example, that's a community service that has a delay. Community events are things like band meetings, things like, you know, the community events that, that occur throughout town and emergency events. Like, right now, I've got text messages saying that, you know, there's fires on two different roads in town from the lightning storm we're getting right now. Part of town's out of power, you know, so certain things like that, clearly it's an emergency event, and so to communicate. I think we don't wanna tie the hands of the staff from day to day, but I think sometimes there's messaging that needs to get out, and I would propose that it comes from the select board.
All right. I'll open it up to discussion.
Well, anytime there's a new policy, there's a reason for the policy. So I'll ask, what other, what press releases have we released that don't fall into this category? Like, why is this policy coming up?
Yeah. Well, bluntly, I mean, I, I think that there isn't a, I don't think that there have been any press releases that have been released during the course of my tenure that fell, that would have, in which this policy would have applied. I think it's important that we don't have any that fit outside of these bounds without the select board's consent.
So by what you just said, I am to believe that you, one night, thinking about community and, and municipal government and the abstract, you came up with this with no...
No.
Okay. No.
What I said was, there was an email that we received, and it was in, in response to that email, there was a reference to a press release. And, and that is where I think I have some concerns about press releases not coming from the board that don't deal with emergencies, that don't deal with community events, and that don't deal with, you know, what was my other thing? Community services. Really straight to the point.
Yeah.
Isn't there an existing policy on communications that it be the town manager?
Say that again?
That any public communications be the town manager?
I think that's under the charter.
Yeah, and it's in the charter as well.
Can we clarify what the conflict would be?
So without your amendment, the town manager would have the authority to put out a public communication? That's the conflict.
So as I, and I did look back at the charter, and I think that, to me, this is a clarification. I think that how I, how I read this, and, and I, and I did not find a conflict in the charter in terms of, you know, what the role is of the town manager. I, I didn't read one. But I think that it's important for things to be communicated, such as community events and emergencies and community services.
If it relates to something that's a different matter that you're referencing, that's also under the town manager's authority?
Well, I think what I'm proposing as a policy is that we, I think it's, it's really direct, it's really short, it's really brief, and it's, to me, pretty clear.
Where in the charter does this reference? Is it just under the powers and duties?
I think it relates to...
I'm looking.
Anything related to personnel.
Heather, did you say that there was something specifically about communications in here?
Obviously, I would think we'd need more time to look into this. I just learned.
That's the first thing I was gonna say, is that since we're just getting this tonight, I would at least wanna look at it and review it, make sure there are no, you know, contradictions in what's the duties and everything are.
I do think it's important for the select board to have, you know, have an opinion on, on what the, the town is putting out there, but I would also wanna review what we currently have.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really see a reason why it would conflict or be controversial. And I think it's important to streamline communications, but just glancing over, I don't think I see anything that leads me to believe that there's a conflict here. So we're all just glancing?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna do, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to do it quickly, but I wanna be able to at least review it. Again, getting it one night, I'm not, I'm certainly, no matter what the policy was, I'm not gonna approve it in the same night I get it. I'd like to think about it, and I'd like to, you know, think, look at what has been done and what it, you know, think about what the ramifications are, I mean, of the policy. So I would do that with any policy that is being presented for the first time. I would never present it and vote on it in the same night, anyway.
So what are other members thinking?
Yeah, I need, I, I would like more time to, to look at it as well.
So the existing town communications policy is section two-point-one-one. All communications regarding town procedure and administration or which may affect the town or its personal, personnel as a whole will either originate from or be approved by the town manager prior to distribution. No individual in the town is to send or distribute any communication to all personnel or all users without prior authorization from the town manager. Managers are authorized to send or distribute communications regarding their area's business.
What section is that?
Two-point-one-one.
That's right, before this one? Well, when we discuss this next week, I will be looking to repeal a portion of that and approve.
I think you have two members that aren't gonna be here this week.
Or whenever it happens. And I will be looking to move forward. And at least get a vote on where we stand on this, if not today, then as soon as humanly possible.
So reiterate what you just said. You wanted to...
I said I will. I did not catch that verbiage in the report that I looked up, because I did verify that I was not conflicting with the charter or any policies. So I will need to modify a repeal of a portion of that, two-point-one-one as well. That's a separate action.
Two-point-one-one in where?
And then I'm also proposing two-point-thirteen.
You're proposing that tonight still?
I am.
Okay.
But I think we have members that aren't comfortable, I think we heard from a majority, and so that they'd prefer to take more time to look this over.
I have no problem with, with adopting a policy that the select board has a say in these types of communications that go out. I don't think that they happen very often. I just don't know if we already have one on the books, how that, how that works.
We need to look at the conflict in two-point-eleven and, and see what verbiage conflicts. But I mean, I don't, again, I did a scrub of this, and I didn't see a conflict.
What document did you cite?
That's the select board policies and procedures.
Let me look it up. Let me pull that one up. I'll go to the website for that.
This is one that's in the drive, not up to date.
This is, this is a policy that's been in place, I think, my whole time that I've been here.
I'm gonna go to the website and just pull up from there.
On page thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Get to it.
Oh, just search.
It's in the drive.
It's in our drive?
It is in the drive, yeah.
Section two-point-one-one, right? Town communications?
Mm-huh.
All communications regarding town procedure and administration or which may affect the town or its personnel as a whole will either originate from or be approved by the town manager prior to distribution. No individual in the town is to send or distribute any communication to all personnel or all users without prior authorization from the town manager. Managers are authorized to send or distribute communications regarding their area's business.
I mean, personnel, administration, I think are, I, again, I, I read through these. I didn't see a conflict, and I'm trying to think back. Maybe I, I, I mean, a town procedure or an administration, I think, is generally within services?
Yeah, I would, I was, I guess I thought this section, just reading it right now, looks more like it's internal, but...
I don't actually really see a conflict here.
I, I do. I mean, I guess communications versus, what was the other language?
Well, I mean, this is town communications, and I think the implication is that it's within the town, and I, I think that what I'm proposing is a public communication policy, which means when things go outside of the town and also to the town. So it's, you know, I mean, the current communications, as it relates to this, are emails, you know, or, or social media posts.
So your proposed section, it would be public, public press releases essentially?
Correct. When it's a communication intended to be beyond...
So it's the town's opinion on something outside of...
Correct. That it needs to come from the select board.
And is there nothing in the policy or charter about external communication already?
I did not find a, a conflict at all. I did not find any clarifying language aside from, you know, in our own charge, in which, you know, we have all chief executive powers that any, you know, how it reads, or any, you know, paraphrasing that any chief executive should have. I mean, I think that, that's, that's, I would like time to consider what is being asked and what is written here and everything, so that's what I would ask.
Okay. Selectman Moore, where are you at?
I'm comfortable adding it.
Okay. What is your motion?
I move to adopt section two-point-thirteen.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.
So we saw and, I mean, again, just procedurally, no, first of all. We saw and adopted language that this board hasn't even seen, except one member who's proposing it, in one night, in one night. Even board members who asked time to consider it couldn't, I mean, it, it, once again, I mean, you guys really have no idea how this stuff should run, do you? You really don't have any idea how any of this should run. Nobody presents and adopts a policy in a day, in one night. It just, it's, it's, it's really hard to fathom. But there you go. We got it.
My vote is no as well.
All right. The motion passes three to two. So moving to current business, up first is draft letter to Representative Scarsdale regarding a meeting with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on July nineteenth. Have you all had an opportunity to read the letter? It's in our drive.
Yes.
I'm just trying to find it. Hold on one second. So I'll just summarize. So it includes two specific gaps. So the first is increase chapter seventy funding. We urge you to work with your colleagues in the legislature to implement a, an inflation fix, either with supplemental funding in fiscal year twenty-five or for the fiscal year twenty-six budget process. And then the second thing is bus funding and contracts. So there's a couple of things here. The first is to reimburse non-regional schools for their transportation costs. Woonenberg currently receives zero-dollar reimbursements from the state to transport typical students. Two, address lack of competition in bus contracting. And then three, to regulate busing companies like other private vendors essential to the operation of public schools. And then it touches on a couple of other things, for example, the loss of smart growth funding, the millionaire's tax, and how it's kinda difficult to understand where that funding is going, and also, actually, that's pretty much it. So is there any feedback that we have on this letter, or do we want to approve it?
No.
I provided the feedback to, to Mandy after she sent it, and, you know, what I advised her was that I don't, I don't necessarily agree with the reimbursement for non-regional schools. I think that on the state level, that they should incentivize communities to regionalize, and they should provide for some cost related to that. However, in this role as a member of the board, our, our objective is to try to secure as many dollars as possible, and I don't work for the state legislature, and so I fully support the letter and am interested in it being signed.
All right. Any other feedback, or is there a motion?
I move to approve the draft letter to Representative Scarsdale regarding the meeting with the, with Desi on July nineteenth.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. So that leaves fiscal year twenty-twenty-five select board goals. So I'm gonna open up the drive real quick. I think we can start off by reviewing our last year's goals and just check in and see if there's anything that we wanna carry over, and then we can sort of just add all of our ideas to a list of what we think our goal should be for the year, and then we're, we'll see where that goes. Hold on one second. Trying to find it. So if you go all the way to the root folder, there is a folder in all caps entitled Select Board Goals. And then fiscal year twenty-three is up on top.
Let's get to this. You said if we go into our...
Fy twenty-three?
Yep.
What was it said?
Go all the way to the top, yep, and scroll down.
Are we in twenty-five?
No, all the way.
You're going the wrong way.
I don't know where the FY twenty-four goals are.
I know. Where are they?
I think there's a typo on the sheet.
That's the first one.
Do we not have a document on the FY twenty-four goals?
My recollection is that we never formally adopted any goals last year, and that we basically continued with the previous goals. That's my recollection.
Well, I know that these were the goals that we had, so...
And that we were trying to work through over the course of the year.
Yeah.
There is another file, if you just search for it, not in that folder, that says, it's titled FY twenty-four goals. But then the actual title in the document still says FY twenty-three.
Yeah, that's why I think it was a mistake on the document.
But it's not in that, that folder. If you search for it, it's just in the drive.
FY twenty-three goals?
No, search for, just search for goals.
I'm still just looking off of this one, so we can see if there's any difference.
They're similar, but they are different.
Okay.
Because at least that top line or that top objective is current. The other one was only through twenty-two.
Okay. Here it is. So objective one...
My, I will say, my recollection is that we never formally adopted these. That, that is my recollection.
Okay. I mean...
That we have been, we talked about them, we got through the end of the summer, and then we kinda just shifted gears.
Well, I recall several meetings... Well, I recall several meetings where we had updates on our goals, so we must have adopted them in some regard. But if we didn't, that would be a failure of putting goals together, and if these are the goals, this is a failure of achieving any of them. So we have two excellent choices. Either we didn't adopt any, which would be a failure, or we didn't complete any of them, which is a failure.
Well, we definitely completed Objective 1. Continue to pursue a project acceptable to the town regarding the property and building at 30 School Street.
We did? What was the property? What was... what project did we pursue this year?
So I was looking at the other form, and the other form listed the demolition in specifics. So now I'm looking at this one. Action: Seek public engagement to review and evaluate landscape architect plans for potential resubmission at 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Create working title that identified multigenerational benefit for residents with a clear, unique purpose, and communicate and identify funding sources. So...
Unless I'm mistaken, we didn't achieve any of those.
That's my recollection as well.
All right, so...
I think, as we think about this being a goal realistically, I think what we've heard is that, you know, we've heard concerns from the residents when we went before them and we asked for funding for the site to do something other than just tear down the building, and the residents, you know, declined. I mean, we had a whole plan for 30 School Street of, you know, how to make it this multigenerational space for people, and that was declined. Currently, it's being used as, you know, the... is it called T-ball? It's currently being used as the T-ball kind of field for the younger kids. And then I think it's also the, you know, the financial picture in town, as we may recall, changed as we went through the year, and the focus was on the override, and knowing that, you know, funding is going to be always limited in different areas.
Yeah, it definitely wasn't number one priority
No.
throughout the year, so... So which of these do we think should carry over? Are there any that we think should carry over? I would probably propose review Select Board bylaws, just like policy review and bylaw review could probably list as a goal to continue that work.
Well, we tried that last year. We ran into some complications, and I think a lot of disagreements that kind of stopped us in our tracks, as I recall, on some of the policies or some of the bylaws that we were looking at. You know, there are... I think we had a large difference of opinion on whether or not we thought that they actually needed to be modified.
Yeah.
But we did do a review last year of our bylaws. We went over all of them several times, but we never proposed any changes, and so therefore we didn't have any public hearings, and we did not go forward with the warrant article.
So it doesn't really sound like we want to carry over any of these from last year to this year?
I think I'd want to take a little bit more time before I had an opinion on that.
Yeah, this may, if I may suggest this, it may be helpful to hit this as a workshop a little closer to the beginning of the meeting. I think it's a little harder at 9:30, but...
All right. We can continue to work on this then, but thank you for the initial conversation. Minutes, there aren't any tonight.
I thought I saw some in the drive. No?
Oh, there are. My apologies. Completely missed it. Yep, we have minutes from October 24th. I haven't reviewed them clearly. Have other people taken a look? No?
Yeah, I have.
All right.
Do we want to vote on them, or...
Sorry, what?
Do we want to vote on them, or do people need time?
I'm waiting to get some responses from other members.
I'm fine with voting them.
All abstentions say I wasn't part of the board.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of October... what was the date?
24th.
24th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero to one. All right, warrants. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $953,809.13. And is this all the same one? Yep. And an accounts payable warrant in the amount of
Is this accounts payable too?
Yes. Are there any action items?
I just have one general action item slash comment. If I can request for material to be reviewed and discussed at a meeting to be in our Google Drive the day before, if possible.
Okay. Any other action items?
I like it more than a day if possible. I think it is hard having a full-time job and three kids to find the time, especially when it's the day of. It's almost impossible to review the documents. I know that can be hard, especially when there's certain, you know, when things come up last minute, but the sooner we have, the things, the easier it is to review them.
All right, any others?
That's why it is the policy, that if something comes up at that meeting, we postpone them and let people read them and let people think about them instead of, you know, boom, 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 and just going down. I mean...
All right, committee reports.
Budget Task Force met last week, and we are meeting next week. The first task is to do a comparison with benchmarks, both municipal and school, because we... there will be different benchmarks, I expect. And Mr. Scollbrini is the chair. Ezekiel is the vice chair. Oh, and I'm the clerk. Yeah, I'm the clerk. And related to that, FinCom voted for an alternate, and it is Ms. Jean Russell.
Who is it?
Ms. Russell.
Okay.
I think that's all.
Capital Planning Committee met last Wednesday... well, actually, Town Manager Screening Committee met last Wednesday first and discussed the ad. That is being... that meeting is being held tomorrow to finalize the ad and get it in MMA and talk about some other avenues that we want to advertise in some of that locations. And there was also the talk of potentially using a recruiter. So that will be continued to be discussed, but the ad will definitely go out. Then Capital Planning met, we reorged, so Peter Beardmore is now the chair, I am the vice chair, and Matt Brenner is the clerk. We only have four members, but we did talk about the calendar. The town manager provided a schedule of calendars, making us aware that, of course, one of the superintendents for the town facilities is on paternity leave for eight weeks, so that we should plan accordingly. And we talked about how to start a little earlier and schedule them earlier, especially the more comprehensive ones, so that inevitable questions that get asked can be answered, because in the past years, the more difficult ones were late, and therefore any questions we had, they never got back to us before the deadline of the end of the year when we had to have the list finalized. So that is going forward. Their next meeting is on the 31st, and the Town Manager Screening Committee's meeting is tomorrow, but I will be here for the interviews instead.
I don't have any.
Council on... sorry, what?
I owe some, but I...
You owe some, but you don't have any tonight?
I need to formally put them together.
All right, that's fine. Council on Aging met this morning. We spent a lot of time discussing ARPA, and we got some ideas for requests that are going to be coming through. They also discussed something that I brought up before, which is changing the title of the Director on Council on Aging, so that it better reflects what that role actually does, which isn't so much related to the Council on Aging, but Elder Services, although they're trying to come up with a name that doesn't include the word elder, because I guess in the Council on Aging world, they're trying to move away from that term. So they're going to continue that discussion to come up with a new title. And they also spent a lot of time talking about formulating a long-term plan, so things that they can do to improve the services that they offer and offer new services. Something that they talked about was organizing trips, like to the Groton Music Center, whatever that venue is, and things like that, and also expanding the kitchen, so that instead of two days a week, they're offering meals five days a week. So it was a very productive meeting. And Planning Board did not meet yesterday, so I don't have a report for that. Upcoming meetings. We have a meeting tomorrow night to interview interim town manager candidates. That'll be at 6:00 PM, and then we have a meeting on July 23rd. Any public comment from the town manager?
Yes, I have two public comments. The first relates to the Council on Aging meeting. The Council on Aging Director announced that she will be resigning or retiring on December 31st, 2024. She wrote a really beautiful letter that I will pass around to the board through email. But as I said at that meeting, Sue has done an incredible job at the senior center. I've been honored to work with her over the last seven and a half years, and we'll all be sad to see her leave. My other comment relates to the communication policy that the board just adopted. So I'm really disappointed in the board's action tonight on adopting this policy. After I raised my comments, the other two members raised their comments. I see this as in direct opposition to the current policy, and knowing what I know about the underlying reason why this is being put forth, that this directly relates to a personnel matter, that Labor Council has specifically said is not within the jurisdiction of the board, but is the town manager, I see this as a political move to make sure that the board interjects in that personnel matter. So I'm very opposed and disappointed in the board's action tonight, knowing what you know.
Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Passios?
Good evening. Dave Passios, 56, Wedding Street. If you'll indulge me for just a moment, in your conversations about the salary range for town manager, I did an online search. It says AI overview, but I think it's just a Google search. But... and I've always been concerned with the comps that we keep coming up with for collective bargaining agreements and individual salaries and things like that. There's a group that agrees with me in town that these comps are always higher than we think they should be. So anyway, if you'll indulge me, it's one paragraph. As of July 20th, 2024, July 2024, the average salary for a town manager in Massachusetts is $122,548 per year. According to ZipRecruiter, the salary range for town managers in Massachusetts is wide, with some earning as little as $52,422 and others earning as much as $209,688. Seventy-fifth percentile is $154,500, and the ninetieth percentile is $174,193. So I ask you, do not give away the bank when you set these salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
Any public comments from the board?
I do. Since I won't be here next week, Heather, this is my last meeting with you. I shared some public comments when you initially announced your resignation, but I, again, want to take this opportunity. I've worked with you just for a little over a year, but I want to thank you for your dedication, your hard work. You have a very good heart. You have very well-intentioned. Your diligence and your work ethic are superb, and I want to wish you all the best in whatever lies ahead for you as you leave Lunenburg.
So when town manager announced her resignation several weeks ago, I said I would reserve. So this is the last chance I get publicly. You know, one of the best votes I ever made was voting to hire Heather, and it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you for all these years. To your absence, I apologize, but one of the hardest workers I know, one of incredible detail and diligence and acumen in certainly the financial and town management area, and someone with the absolute highest integrity that I have ever worked with. And that is not an easy combination. Somebody who I thought was very, you know, stern when they had to be, and yet never not empathetic for the residents and the employees. Somebody who listened, who came up with ideas and listened to competing ideas, and was always willing to compromise where appropriate, stay on ground when appropriate. We saw that tonight, just now with your comments. And I'm sorry that the last 18 months of your tenure here was marred with a real debacle that I was very clear was not of your making. And yet that consumed your job and consumed you with lots of additional stress that was not needed. That stress came from the situation, it came from some of the residents, and it came from internally in Town Hall. And that was unfortunate, and I am very sorry to see you go. But I will say that knowing you, first of all, you will do well wherever you land, and given the tone of recent meetings, I think it's a great decision you made to seek greener pastures. I wish you all of the best.
Thank you.
I do just have a follow-up comment, because that was a controversial thing that we just passed. And the reason that I was comfortable, even though I was going back and forth with it, was because we had two members that wouldn't be here at the next couple meetings, and as Heather is leaving in the next few weeks, before we would have a chance to vote on that policy, I think, not knowing who might be in that role, it is important that we have a say over these external communications. And that is the reason that I was comfortable moving forward. Not comfortable, but reason why I did vote to move that forward tonight, because I didn't see that as another option before Heather left.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 All right, it is 9:42 PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in tonight. We will be here tomorrow to interview interim town manager candidates and next Tuesday. Thank you.